Welcome to the regular meeting of the Forsyth County Board of Commissioners. This is a briefing session and a briefing session only. We'll begin our meeting by turning to our county manager, Dudley Watts.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Good afternoon, board members and staff and guests. What we have today on the agenda is two discussion items. We have our esteemed Forsyth Tech Community College President here to do a quarterly update, Dr. Janet Spriggs, and I believe we committed to her that we would let her go first because she's got some important community college business to move along with. We received some information yesterday about the settlement, the opioid settlement through the Attorney General's Office, and Gordon's prepared it. I don't think he's got all the details and a lot to work through there, but it looks like there was a break in that, and so if you want to, we can do that after we do the, finalize the agenda for the July 29th meeting. And so that's the main order of business today. I know we do have a lot of folks who are in the audience around the issue of the event center, and what I'll do when we get to that is I'll just pull that item up to the very first, brief that one first, and make a recommendation to the board around that. But I do think we owe Dr. Spriggs some time and attention, first off, so she can get...
Everybody needs to know we have 33 items on the agenda, and none of them are short. I think the county manager is right on spot.
So, Dr. Spriggs, yeah, come on up to the podium, please, and give us, tell us about the good things happening with Forsyth Tech Community College.
Wonderful. Good afternoon, everyone and commissioners. Thank you so much for the opportunity. I'm going to try to work the technology. It looks like I've got it for now. Thank you so much for the opportunity, once again, to be here in person with you to share some of the good things happening at your community college. I'd like to first say, as I was driving over, I was thinking about some advice my mother gave me. She told me to always lead with gratitude. So, the very first thing, since this is our first meeting that we've had together in the new fiscal year, let me say thank you so very much for all of your support. I was mentioning to Commissioner McDaniel earlier that all of the counties in our great state don't always recognize the importance and the value of their community college. And here in Forsyth County, you do, and we appreciate that greatly. So, thank you for your support financially, your budget support for this fiscal year is important for us to be able to carry out our mission and reach our vision, but you always support us even outside of the financial piece, and we're very, very grateful for that. So, thank you so much for that. I want to start with this brand-new picture of our aviation center, which we do have occupancy of now, and we are excitedly moving in, we actually have pretty well moved in and are working through the processes with FAA to finalize the certification program for, or the certification that's required for the programs that we will have there. We tried to schedule a grand opening in September, but we could not. The schedules of all of the important people, you included, who need to be there for this celebration could not be managed in a way to get it in September. So, we are now finalizing dates in October, a date in October. We will invite you to be there to celebrate the opening of the building, to remind you and give you a little snapshot of some things that are included in the programs that will be there. Our main program, if you will, the charter program there is Aviation Systems Technology. And as you know, that program is going to educate students in the requirements that they need to be aviation maintenance technicians. There are three phases of that training for that credential. General airframe and power plant are two of those, and the others, if you look at the labs that are included on the other side, you can get an idea of the other components that are part of that program. At the bottom, at the little airplane graphic that we have, composite structures and aircraft welding are going to be programs that we're going to be able to do in addition to the main program. So, in other words, they can get certificates in some of these things. There is almost 52,000 total square feet at this building, and there's 15,356 square feet of aviation hangar space, 18,303 square feet of classroom and lab and first-floor storage, and that same amount on the upstairs floor that includes classroom, lab, a library, office, conference room, and lots of other office or general use space there. We have already started moving in some of the equipment that we have purchased through a million-dollar grant that we received, as well as through some donations from some of the industry partners that we have. So, very, very excited. We have students who are enrolled at the college who, in the fall, will be taking their general education classes. So, the degree program requires them to have a baseline of general education, English and math and science and those things. They start with those, they'll be starting with those in the fall, and then they will begin the aviation system programs in the spring semester. So, we're very, very excited about that. When I come back to visit you for the next quarterly update, I will have the actual numbers of students that are in the program to share with you at that time. We also have been working hard to be better partners and to be, expand our partnerships with our K-12 system, with Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools. So, Superintendent Tricia McManus and I brought our leadership teams together at our Maisy S. Woodruff Center in East Winston a few weeks ago to talk about how we can be better partners overall, but with a specific focus on Carver High School. And the reason we focused on Carver High School is because we believe, both of us, both Superintendent McManus and I and our teams believe that we can have the greatest impact there. We are solidly present in all of the high schools within the Winston-Salem Forsyth County School District, but we have not as, we do not have as many students from Carver that take advantage of some of the programs that we believe could be extremely impactful, such as the dual enrollment program where they can be high school students taking college credits. We only had four students in the spring semester that were enrolling in career high, or I'm sorry, college and career promise dual enrollment classes. At our other high schools like Mount Tabor and some of the others, we have significantly larger numbers of students taking advantage of those classes. So, we are partnering to lead the way for IT training at Carver High School. That is because we already had a presence with teaching IT along with Carver there, and we want to expand that opportunity because there is a lack of jobs in IT and cybersecurity, and we have a nationally recognized IT program in cybersecurity at Forsyth Tech. We also want to make connections to students earlier at Carver. So, we know that if we can start talking to them in ninth grade, get them enrolled in the CCP classes, and stay with them through that high school experience, we can more easily create a college-going culture there. Carver has a lot of students who don't choose college after they graduate from high school, and so we want to turn that around, and we want it to be an expectation that they will take college courses while they're there to get used to that college experience, and that they will then go on to college, whether it's Forsyth Tech or another college or university when they graduate. We're working on mentoring plans. We are also focusing on EMT, aviation, and advanced manufacturing in addition to IT there, and we're looking at how we can package and promote Carver as a school that is a place of promise, which is, of course, Forsyth Tech's brand and tagline, but we want to help more students choose to go to Carver High School as well, and then help them create that lifelong learning pipeline when they graduate. So, very excited about that. We announced a few weeks ago as well, this is a picture from our announcement, of free tuition for all North Carolina 2021 high school graduates. Class of 2021 college commitment is the program. We are able to fund that with a package of federal, state, and some foundation dollars, but very few. Most of the money for this is coming from federal stimulus dollars as well as Pell, federal Pell money. So, basically, what we said that day was if you graduated from any North Carolina high school in 2021, come to us, and we mean totally free. So, for us, free is free. No book cost, no tuition cost, everything you need, all fees are covered, and we're going to pay for the whole year.
That's my favorite word.
Free? We like it, too. Yes. It's a great word, especially for our students who really need that to be able to take that leap and come to college. So, please help us spread that word. We've had a lot of enrollment since we announced that, but we still are tracking down about 1% of new student enrollment from last year to this year. So, we need to get that word out. We have about three more weeks before classes start, and you see here, classes start August 19th. We are offering all classes on campus, so we still have a very high percentage of our courses that will have online components for students that choose the online. We found that some students prefer that, and we've also adjusted our classes so that we can offer classes in person, but students at the same time can be at home, and we can be streaming the class to them if they need to miss that day, and we're recording it so that they will be able to go back later and take the, view the lecture, and then do the work associated with it. We also implemented year-round registration, and I wanted to point that out because it's a wonderful opportunity for students to be able to come to us and meet with an advisor and plan out their entire year in one visit, which has been a real important customer service feature for our students, and it kind of gets them committed, which helps us stay connected to them and make sure that they keep moving forward. Enrollment. We are looking at this event that I wanted to just put here for you. I want to say, in my PowerPoints, all the photos you see are our actual students. We don't use any canned photography. So, we have a mix of students, as you can see from all the photos. That's one of the things we're most proud of in community colleges is that we serve everyone. This is an opportunity on July 28th for us to help more students take advantage of the college commitment for 2021. So, just wanted to share that with you. So, if you know any students or any of your friends or neighbors who have students who haven't committed to a college or university and have graduated, please send them our way. On July 28th, we'll make it a lot of fun with music and food and lots of information, and we'll get everybody enrolled while they're there with us. It's 11 to 2, and then again, 3 to 7. And now to update you on the capital projects. Our Learning Commons project has been approved. You all had approved it earlier this year. We've moved it through the state processes for the state board, and it has now been approved. We are in the process of selecting the designer for this project, and as you can see, it's estimated at $21 million, paid for with our county bond issue, with an estimated recurring cost of $476,000, and it is going to be 70,000 square feet of 21st Century Library Learnings Commons. So, a lot of electronic accessibility. This is a picture of our current library. I can't wait to show you what the new one will look like. It will not look the same at all. We, oops, I'm sorry. I think I'm going the wrong direction. Let's try this way. We have completed Phase 1 of our Maine Creek repairs. This is, again, used county capital funding for this project, and it is complete. We still have to plant the vegetation that we have to replace after they had excavated and repaired the creek, the creek bed, and so that will happen this fall, but Phase 1 is completely done. We, on the R.L. Strickland Building renovations, we did have some issues with that project, and we are changing architects. I will update you at my next meeting with the details on that. Right now, we're still in the process of managing through that, but we, the way the contract is situated, we can do that without losing the work product. It's ours. We own the work product. So, we have to find, we are in the process now of hiring the new architect and giving them that work product to begin the rest of the design. And again, I'll have more information. This will actually help us complete this project sooner than what we anticipated we'd be able to do, so we're very excited about that. The Transportation Center is in, that's, again, funded with Forsyth County Commission, or construction bonds, and that is in the programming phase now. We've hired the architect, and we're working on programming, and we're in the first phase of our three-phase project to be complete on August 6th for our 2/3 bond funding for the Hoosier Hall HVAC upgrades. Again, funded with Forsyth County money. That is all of the information that I had to share with you today. I always like to end with our vision statement so that you all know, we are still committed to being the catalyst for equitable economic mobility, empowering lives and transforming communities that I tell you about every time I'm with you, because I want you to know that we're focused on where we're trying to go, and again, we appreciate your help in helping us get there. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Dr. Spriggs, comments?
Just one comment, Mr. Chairman. Dr. Spriggs, just a moment of thanks to you. I have a sixth grader on your campus as we speak. She's in an all-female class for coding and something else, but she's enjoying her stay over there in the camp that you have on campus, so thank you very much.
That's wonderful. That's our GenCyber Camp, and it's funded by federal money. Every summer, we get this money from, so far, we've been successful at getting money from the Department of Education to run the GenCyber Camp, and they build robots that you will get to see your, I think you said it was your granddaughter, Commissioner. She'll be able to program and run that robot for you soon. So, thank you.
You know, I was thinking about the two billionaires in this country who took a trip to outer space on a rocket. I'm not sure what you're going to teach about rockets, but this aviation program at Forsyth Technical Community College is exciting. I mean, who knows? Someone who graduates that class may go either to the moon or whatever, but it's, this was an exciting presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And I just, Dr. Spriggs, just like to say thank you for your, you know, great overview report, but, and I've appreciated your, you've also shared your goals and progress reports.
Yes.
And I don't know which of your quarterly reports you do that, but I'm looking forward to seeing your, because you set good benchmarks, and I'd love to see your benchmarks as you move along. That may be coming up after, or which one you do that at.
I will, it should be, I think, I can't remember the schedule. We are on the schedule for the rest of the year, but we get our data in September. Some of that data is tied to the iPad system, which is a federal system, so it would be after we get the data in September at that next meeting. I think it's probably October timeframe for you.
And I'll look forward to seeing, and I appreciate your work at Carver, and I'd certainly look forward to seeing the, your enrollees, and I believe you'll grow over four, and dual enrollment and the other thing. So, that's a great partnership. I'm really glad to hear about that.
Additional comments or questions?
Yes. Dr. Spriggs, I wanted to say thank you always for all that you do. It actually concerns me a little bit. I'll reach out to Principal Carol Montague relative to Carver, because I do want those students to have some awareness around the marketing that's happening at Forsyth Tech. So, I will make a phone call to her. And speaking of marketing, if you could share the Rock and Enroll flyer, I'll be glad to share.
Oh, I will, absolutely. I'll send that to you. And Dr. Montague Davis was at our planning meeting, so she's very, very excited about all of the plans and was heavily involved in the planning that we are doing for Carver. So, thank you.
Just a little update. She's retiring this year, Commissioner.
I was going to say, you might be able to prevent her from retiring.
But listen, can senior citizens enroll in the program in aviation? Are we allowed to?
There are going to be, yes. I mean, any citizen can enroll in aviation, but if you want to take the two-year program, you enroll in what we have. We also have some continuing education, short-term things that you can enroll in as well. You can learn how to fly a drone, for example, which is pretty fun.
Thank you very much.
Dr. Janet Spriggs, you have really done a good job, and glad you're here.
Thank you. I'm so glad to be here.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm afraid to touch this, Ashley.
Okay. All right. Mr. County Manager.
All right. Very good. So, as I mentioned before, we'll go ahead and move Item 15 on the agenda up as we finalize this agenda for the July 29th meeting. So, Item 15 is a resolution selecting and authorizing execution of an agreement with Shellco LLC to act as a design builder and provide design and pre-construction services for the Tanglewood Multi-Use Event Center. James Anderson reviewed that last Thursday, really to kind of get this part of the project started. I think the one kind of key part of this is that we do not actually have the design. Since we are doing this under design-build, the design and the pre-construction services are kind of all together. That firm would bring you a package that would have a lot of details about the facility, and then the board would act whether or not to go ahead and enter a contract for construction. So, that was the item that was presented. It obviously got some newspaper coverage by Wesley Young, our fine reporter with Winston-Salem Journal, and so we have had a lot of interest in this. So, I'm just going to real quickly go back through a little bit of the timeline on this, sort of how we got to where we are today. So, this project was part of the bonds that were approved in the referendum in November of 2016. It was listed specifically in the bonds as a multi-use or multipurpose agricultural exposition center, and it was identified for about $5 million. The board, I mean, obviously, the bond order and the financial documents do not require that you use that money for that purpose. It was part of a Parks and Recreation Facility Bonds, but clearly, you know, that project was included as an advertised component of that when the bonds were approved a long time ago in 2016. That bond structure, as you well know, because we have lived through a lot of years of it, had four issuances, and so the part that was related to this was actually at the very end when we put that schedule together. So, this project, we would not be talking about it right now in such detail, except that because of the amazing lending, borrowing environment that we're in, the board voted to go ahead and move a part of those bond sales up, and we moved this part of it up because it was an easy last piece to do that. But otherwise, this project really would not have been, it would start until 2023. Moving it up, we, you know, we have a unique opportunity right now to go ahead and move a project forward. So, after November of 2016, we put together a work group almost immediately that started meeting quarterly, fairly regularly, because we wanted to understand the economics of a multi-use agricultural exposition center. We looked at and did site visits, looked at lots of other facilities, looked at the economics of them, looked at all of the four horse complexes that are in North Carolina, had visited those, got their financials and reviewed those, had a team of about 10 or 15 folks kind of from across organizations to do that work, and really concluded with a report that was presented. We did that part of it, and then the other part of it was where to put the thing. And so, we did a lot of work over those years where we went out to the towns, talked to them about possible partnerships. There was some indication that the early intentions were, because of the horse venue there at Tanglewood, that it was really going to be there, but we did go out and look at other facilities. We talked to the towns, maybe a partnership. Did, you know, did Rule Hall or Walker Town want to have a Walker Town Forsyth County Exposition Center and put some money in it? That did not generate any interest from the towns. The next thing we did, we looked at... The next thing we did, we looked at park facilities. You know, is there another park that we have? Should you put it at Horizon? Should you put it, is there a space at Triad? Is there space at CG Hill? And looked at all of those and went through that. That really led us back to Tanglewood. And then we looked at five or six sites at Tanglewood for this. And so, all that work culminated, so last November, I think it was November 20th, Christopher Ong and our Budget Management Department, who sort of led, he was the administrative lead on the, the work that was done around comparable facilities. And then Marco Andretti, where's Marco? Somewhere. Marco's in the very back corner. Marco's with, with City County Development Services, landscape architect. He has helped us conceptualize lots of things through this. And so, he, he took his expertise and he put this facility on all those sites. And then we even looked at property we didn't own as potential as well. And so, but everything kind of led back to Tanglewood. And so, on November 20th, you heard both the presentation from Christopher as the lead there and then you also heard the presentation from, from Marco. And there was, I don't know if you remember, it was a long presentation, a lot of enthusiasm around the project. And so, I made a grave error as we, as this quickly moved, so the board made a decision in the spring to actually go ahead and move those bonds up and sell, sell on. And so, we've moved pretty quickly based on that, really assuming that the site decision was made. And I don't know if you remember, you know, the November presentation. The one thing about the site decision was that there were pros and cons across 20 sites we looked at. There, you know, what didn't emerge up out of that was the one best place for it. So, we really did, it did land kind of across from the, the horse barn and all that, really as a function of if we're going to have a horse show, the horses need to be near the barns and all of that. And it was really built around that. And so, but what we didn't do and what, what was not evident because it was still unclear when we would actually take this project forward is back in November, we really didn't get, a lot of folks just didn't know about it. And I think we, my grave error was I assumed lots of folks heard about it back in November and that was not the case. So, what I would like to ask the board to do is, is let us spend a couple of meeting cycles. Let us get back out in the community. Let us, let us step through, it's a long presentation because you really do, to get the gist of it, you got to go through the work that was done around what is it? You know, it's, it's an agricultural horse-focused exposition center. But what we learned from that is you got to be more flexible than that. And so, so there's that part of it. And then the other part of it is where's the best place to put it? And we've all gotten emails and a lot of folks have told us the best place to put it.
Can't go there right now.
That's right, that's right. So, my suggestion is let's, let's do an educational push on this. We are prepared to actually do that presentation today if you want to. Y'all have endured it. And so, you know, you guys know what it is. I'm a little, it's really up to you. The only problem is hard to do just part of it because you really do have to do the, you have to do what is a equestrian complex? What is a, an agricultural expo center first so that, so that we, so that you kind of understand the economics of it? And then you really do have to do the siting considerations. And maybe there's a site we hadn't, you know, we hadn't, hadn't identified yet that is the one best site. You know, I think just in the few conversations I've had with folks, you know, there are some, there are some fears that are out there around this thing, you know, would we ever do a monster truck show at the horse facility across from Tanglewood Barns? No. You know, I like my job too much. You know, whatever we do there's got to be consistent with, with that, with, with the surroundings there. And so, anyway, my, my suggestion is give us a little bit of time to go out. We can do, we have already started planning some of those events. Damon, do you have any information about those that we might have on the schedule right now?
So, Mike Anderson has spoken with Melissa Gore at Tanglewood Farms. And so, they're still arranging a time next week, but don't have it tied down yet. She just started doing that this morning.
Yeah, we were going to do one presentation really just for the borders there at the, at the, that the Tanglewood venue has. I thought we would go ahead and try to reach out to the Village of Clemens, probably use their meeting room and do one at the Village Clemens offices, maybe next week, maybe the next. But, but clearly, we need to do, you know, I, clearly, we need to do some more outreach around this. Not everybody picked this up and thought about it as seriously as, as it was last November. And, you know, in retrospect, I should have recognized that.
I think you've done a good job explaining the history of it. From my perspective, you're talking about two or three meetings. That could take us into, could take us into October. We could table this whole thing, which would give, most of these people at this meeting today are interested in that item, give you all a chance to have input, what you like, what you don't like, what you think we ought to do, what you think we shouldn't do. But the bottom line is, that'll give a little extra time and gosh knows from now until October is what, a couple of months?
And we are not on, I mean, again, the opportunities presented itself because we moved bonds up, but we are not under a tremendous, I mean.
Okay.
Folks need to feel good about this.
Any comments or thoughts on this?
Well, I maybe have one. I, I've read, at least as of all the way through seven o'clock last night, I wasn't, I haven't, I've just looked at a couple since then, but I'd read all of them up to that point. And, and basically, I think there's a fair amount of misinformation that has been circulating. And, and I think the, in fact, the very first few emails I received really talked about the horse, horse, that basically this is taking away the horse ring that's on the left side of the road going in across from the stables. It's interfering with the stables. It's going to, it's going to destroy the, all the horse activities when in fact, the original discussion surrounding this was about this being a horse facility. I mean, a place for horse shows, a place for equestrian events. And, and in fact, the, as Dudley has said, you know, if, it provides even a place that's indoors during the winter when there's not events scheduled to have, you know, the, to actually to ride in the wintertime. I mean, there's, there's all kinds of opportunities. The idea was to be symbiotic with the, with the stables and the horse industry. So, so that, that group of emails, that's, that was designed to be in partnership, not in, in competition or opposition. And I, and I think a lot of folks talked about the, the traffic in the park. There was a lot of discussion about that. And I think that, the, the thinking in this first sort of draft, and I think Manager Watts has actually described the, you know, we're, there's no architectural plans because that'll all be put together at the same time. So, there is no plan other than some, here's some areas that we're looking at here to look at. So, it has a roughly 50,000 square foot footprint. It has a parking area. So, the kind of the key, the key for me, and I remember the questions I asked back in November, I couldn't remember how long ago it was, but it was in November. And it really had to do with if you had a large event there, we're on Earthwood People Park, you know, because it, it has a small parking lot, about 300 spaces or so next to it. And trying to, I think all of us are picturing another Festival Lights arena happening every time there's a, you know, an event. And, and the way it's kind of set up to be is that it really has sort of three entry points. And the, and the number one, you turn right like the, the network of the Festival Lights and literally the lar, and anything that was a large event literally would have parking down where that Snake Road is that goes through there and literally would, it's a little elevation difference, but it would have pathways and a ways to get to the event from there. But, and then the issue, you think about horses and a horse show and horse trailers, you would actually go to the left and go through into that side entrance that goes back where the RV park is and so forth into that area. And I, I kind of envisioned that there would be very little traffic on the main road going in at all. So, that, that envisioned congestion is, would probably not be there at all. So, I think it's got, I think understanding those dynamics and then, and then for a number of people ask about, as, as Manager Watts mentioned, there are a number of suggestions about, well, there's a lot of other places you could put this. And, and those, that discussion was, was lengthy and there are pros and cons for all of them. And it's, it would be interesting, I mean, everybody talked about the Soft Golf place that was mentioned. There's, you know, down near the Orchestra Shell area, down in that area, that whole business with the stage. There are all kinds of places and all of those, you know, were in fact, you know, investigated. And, you know, for, for those of the interested parties, I mean, that's a, that's a great story to kind of go through and listen to and, and understand. So, I, I think this idea of the, the take a breath site so that till everyone understands what the proposal even is. And, and it's, I'm sure some of you maybe in this room were not even here when the 2016 bond issue took place. I mean, it was a, that was a long time ago. We're coming up on six years. So, you know, well, five years minimum here with the election. So, so I think that part is a good idea and hopefully bringing that presentation to the Clemens City Hall and to the Village City Hall and to the, and out to the park itself, particularly to the horse owners and to that kind of special. And then there were a lot of people thought that they couldn't do their walking. There were so many people and, and I've been there many times in the evening and it is heavily used and heavily walked and it is, it's a beautiful place. And, and there's no belief that that would interfere with that at all. I mean, it's kind of the idea is, it provides a little better access, parking for that group, for people who live away, and that could work. So, I, I think, I think a lot of that, this is not a discussion point today, but what we're trying to say, there will be opportunities to have those discussions. And I think every idea would be welcome and, and understand that there are no architectural drawings, there are no plans, there is nothing. There's been conceptual work done that was pretty detailed. And I think that's very worthwhile to, for everyone to understand and take a look at.
Yeah, and I have, I have put a notepad at the very back corner in the chair. And if you will put your name and your email on your phone, we'll make sure that when we get the, the meeting scheduled, and we will do several. So, there'll be some opportunities. We will email you and let you know. And if anybody wants, if you want to email the clerk or commissioners, we'll be happy to email you when those events happen. It does ta, it's about an hour and our recollections, we spent about an hour and 15 minutes kind of stepping through it. And we would, I think, to really get the gist of it, you know, that's about what it takes. So, we'll want to do a couple of them and, and even have some small, small groups to help us sort through, sort through things.
Additional comments or questions?
Chairman, if I could, for the individuals that are here today, I have a cliche and I say that if our communities are to be, they're up to you and me. And I'm glad to see that you're here today. I don't represent your areas, but I do make decisions behind those. And thank you Dudley for putting together these community inputs so that we can kind of see what, where we're going. So, thank you for being here.
Okay. Any further comments from you, Mr. Manager?
Don't think so. I think we, did I, let me ask Damon, did I, or Christopher or Marco, anything we need to add to any of that? Okay.
In that case, I think I'll take a 10-minute recess and we'll get back here in 10 minutes and give everybody a chance to let this sink in. If you want to talk to any of us, please don't hesitate to do it and be sure and fill all that out so we can get back in touch with all of you.
All right, I'm Rose. Adam.
You to us, however, once we spend down ERAP one, then that allocation will be given to us for re- on reimbursement purposes as we spend it based on approved applications. And then you have ERAP two, which is nine point one million dollars. And so definitely, we are working with the Budget Office as these monies come in. The agenda item that you have for today is to talk about ERAP two. Please note that with the three point one million, I do recall, that is being allocated, and I think it's one point two for today, they gave it to us partially. Please note that at this point in time, that money is available for us to run this program into 2025.
Excuse me just a minute.
Yes.
Did that give any reason why it would last until 2025?
Commissioner Wisonhun, at this point in time, we don't know yet their exact reason. I would project that we think that the residual impact as it relates to emergency real assistance needs will still be present. However, they have not given any exact justification for that. However, we won't be able to have any, that fund, those fundings could be reallocated as it relates to across the state or either across the US based on needs. We have done that before with our crisis intervention and LEAP funding, where if certain jurisdictions did not have the need, that, that those monies were then sent back to be reallocated.
Thank you.
And so, please note the ERAP eligibility criteria that is before you, of course, you have to be at least eighty percent of the AMI, area median income, or either fifty percent to be considered a priority. Please note that we are working diligently to roll this program out, and we moved forward in partnership with the city to do a contract. And so, we did contract to start this program with Tetra Tech, and also, we are using Neighborly software. Tetra Tech is doing the case management function, and then also, the Neighborly software was put in place. Traditionally, our residents and customers come in to apply for services, but we know with the change in climate, we wanted to have an electronic application process, and so, we have labor that leveraged that via Neighborly. Please note that we do have a marketing plan, and that we are going to do some targeted outreach to county-specific residents, starting eight six twenty twenty one, and that will be direct mailers. And it's going to be about fourteen thousand direct mailers that will go out. Eviction diversion efforts, we have started to participate in the eviction diversion collaborative. Please note that that collaborative is just really getting off the ground in our community as it relates to eviction diversion efforts and working with our chief judge as it relates to rules and regulations and expectations around how evictions are managed. Also, the other piece is, is that we are working with the magistrate's office to make sure that we are getting information from the clerk as well to attend our eviction court to provide emergency real assistance information during court hearings, or either, and we are also reaching out two weeks ahead of time for someone's hearing to say, did you know about the ERAP program? And we're reaching out to the landlord as well as the tenant.
Yeah, and if I may ask a question real quick. With this collaborative, is the sheriff's office participating?
I do not recall seeing, yes, law enforcement is present.
Okay, fair enough, thank you.
Additional questions or comments? Okay, thank you, Victor.
All right.
You want to finish out the last part of it?
Okay.
So, so definitely want to honor Tom. Please note that we do have a MOU to look at how we can pull data from the clerk's office. As with the ALC, that data is not present around who was attending, attending court, and so, we do have to do a hand count to reach out to those individuals. As it relates to program productivity, since the fifth of April, there have been six thousand four hundred and thirty-three applications submitted. Of those applications, thirteen hundred and thirty-nine are under review. Please note that when we say applications initiated at six thousand number, we don't engage in discouragement, and so, individuals are working their way through the application process, and they are, at this point in time, preparing to submit. However, they are working through the process, and it's just like even if they came face to face to apply for a different subsidy with us, if they don't have their, all their documents, they do have to follow up. As it relates to paid and pending, we have paid out six hundred and eighty-eight. Applications denied have been a hundred and twenty-seven, and of course, you see your top three reasons for denial to your right.
Would you know the rough breakdown on, on the hundred and twenty-seven on those three reasons?
So, the top three reasons for denial here are no direct COVID-related impact, indirect or either direct, over income limits, and also, they are a homeowner and they're not renting. And so, as we go through the application process, we discover that they're the owner.
I understand that. I'm saying of the hundred and twenty-seven, roughly, how many are, are no COVID-related impact? How many are over income? How many are homeowner, non-rental?
I would say the majority are within the category of the non-COVID-related impact or either over income limits.
Okay, thank you.
And we do staff those cases as it relates to the denial, and that goes to a committee that city and county also reviews. Of course, you have your program funding status here, and it shows the total number encumbered as it relates to pending dispersment or dispersed. What I will say to this is, is that when you look at our Census Track data and where our low-income populations may rest, you will find that we will continue to probably have higher representation as it relates to utilization within our city parameters. Also, eviction court outreach, this is our data here as it relates to how we're connecting with the tenant as well as the landlord, and having them identify if they have applied to the program, interested, or if they've been unresponsive. Please note, for July, there were two hundred and thirty-seven hearings. Out of those hearings, thirty-three actually had some form of a municipality address, but we do reach out to both city as, as well as county. Considerations as we come to a close, some things that we should note is that this is not a rapid response program, and so, we do have to process the case, and whenever there isn't any data as it relates to a lease agreement, or proof for income, or working through an ID, that we have to follow up to make sure that information is present. Then the other piece is missing essential documents. We have to make sure that we have that information. Tenant and landlord arrangements, please note that there are some landlords that are not interested in, in participating, and we do try to mediate, and there is a ninety-day no eviction clause. We do know that the moratorium has been extended several times, and with that being said, our participation influence has been great as it relates to timeliness and being proactive with this, and we're trying to make sure that we encourage individuals to be timely. And then also, funding is based on population size, not our REERS data, and so, as we look at what our measure of success is, it may not always be spending this money down, but creating accessibility for those that need it to apply. We will be over the, the weeks to come building this service line out, so then therefore, it can be managed at the Department of Social Services. Any questions?
Questions, comments? Okay, thank you, Victor. Appreciate it.
All right. Agenda item five is an amendment to the fiscal year 2021, 2022 budget ordinance to reflect behavioral health allocation across North Communities for Children. Kyle Wolf reviewed that. Chantel, was there any new information around that one in terms of other?
They had not applied for other funding.
Okay, very good. All right, so Kyle reviewed that. He's here if you've got any questions.
Questions for Kyle?
All right. Item six is an adoption of the 2022 Housing Grant Project, Projects Ordinance. Ashley Pendley went through that, and Kyle Haney reviewed a little bit of the questions on that last Thursday. Questions?
Questions, comments? Okay.
Item seven is amendment to the fiscal year 2021, 2022 budget ordinance. It appropriates committed fund balance and transfer of the 2020 Pago Capital Projects Ordinance, and then you've got an associated amendment to the 2020 Pago Capital Projects Ordinance to accept a transfer from the General Fund for the Winston-Sonoma County Schools' Maintenance Colocation. Kyle Wolf reviewed that one.
Questions?
All right. Item eight is a resolution authorizing a request for an acceptance of additional loan funds from the Clean Water Revolving Loan Fund under the Department of Water Quality. It's the four hundred and forty-seven thousand, three hundred dollars to fund the Idle Roads Regional Pump Station. Kyle Haney reviewed that one, and y'all directed us to go ahead and do that.
Comments or questions?
All right. Item nine is an amendment to the fiscal year 2021, 2022 budget. It appropriates additional fund balance from Triangle Fire Tax District. Kyle Wolf reviewed that.
Questions?
All right. You've got two budget amendments for the Public Health Department. You've got an amendment to the 2021, 22 budget ordinance for epidemiology, public health preparedness and response branch funding from the North County Department of Health and Human Services. And item eleven was also reviewed by Adam, and it is for the Women's and Children's Health Section Immunization Branch Funding from the Department of Health and Human Services.
Comments or questions?
All right, straightforward enough. Item twelve is a resolution approving the, the community-based juvenile delinquency, substance abuse, and gang prevention plan for fiscal year 2021, 2022, and authorizing its submission for state approval and implementation, and Kyle reviewed that.
Questions, comments?
All right. All right, you got a one grant item. It's item thirteen, which is a resolution authorizing execution of the necessary documents to apply for and receive US Department of Justice Bureau of Justice Assistance, 2021 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistant Grant Funds. You've got the associated resolution that ratifies and authorizes the interlocal agreement for those funds, and Randy Hunsucker had reviewed how they would be spent.
Comments, questions?
Okay. I got a couple of contracts. Item fourteen is a resolution authorizing execution of amendment to an agreement for elevator and escalator maintenance services. Kirby Robinson reviewed the competitive bids received for that.
Questions?
All right. Item fifteen, we talked about, we are moving off the agenda. Item sixteen is a resolution awarding a contract for the Annex One Roof Replacement Project. James Anderson reviewed that one, as well as item seventeen, which is the public health roof replacement project.
Comments or questions?
All right. Item eighteen is a resolution authorizing execution of an agreement between Forsyth County and Wake Forest University Health Sciences for medical direction services for EMS. Darren Ziegler reviewed that. He's here if you have any questions.
Questions?
Back to the roofs on the two roof projects. Did y'all have any discussion about looking at how we might be able to expedite approval processes on these things with it during this very difficult kind of time of building materials jumping up and down?
Yeah, we did, and then, I don't know if you followed it, but if we would have expedited it a month ago, you would have paid a ton for wood, and now, now it's back to normal. And so, James is back there. We kind of concluded that the marketplace is so strange that it can get you either way. So, I don't, I don't know. James, you want to come up and talk a little bit about, it, it, right after that, I mean, literally, after that happened, price of wood all of a sudden just got back normal again. It was the weirdest thing.
The gospel.
And I, I think as we sort of looked into it, it seems like you're gambling all the time. Is that the crux of it?
So, as Dudley was saying, it, it's going to be a gamble either way. You know, the contractors, they're going to be looking at the future markets, and as Dudley alluded to, the price of wood is now falling out, and, you know, if we expedite something, we could do risk paying more for it upfront, as whereas if they're hedging their bets that it's going to drop in six months, then...
Do you want to talk about allowances? Because you talked a little bit about that, or that was part of it too, wasn't it? The way we do allowances in the contract?
And, and so, that is something that we've done with some of our other projects, is we have done an allowance, and then, once the contractor knows the actual, then we'll adjust the, the contract by change order, up or down, to reconcile that allowance.
That might be a better tool, actually.
Yeah, yeah, well, what I'm trying to do is prevent contract, I mean, even contractors, even with the wood thing, what, instead, they ended up making a lot of money, because everybody's padding their bids to cover an uncertain marketplace in materials. And in this roof business, I mean, that's, you know, that's a big, that's a big, big chunk, when, I mean, one item, and, and it's running way over. So, so they would all build in, so, so if there's a way to, to allow adjustments both ways to the contractor on that, that we will have an escalation clause, if you get burned later, and at the time, there'll be a way to handle that, and, and, and if it's a way to prevent abuses, I mean, I can see some abuses in that too, but I do think something like that would make, might, might be helpful. I just think it's, I mean, I, I know on these roofs, we're paying fifteen percent more just, just to protect the contractor.
Yeah, yeah, in hindsight, you know, if we had have seen how the market was going to go for roofing when we did this one, we would have done allowances so that we could have then went back and, you know, reconciled the actual cost after the fact.
Of course, by the way, we could reject these bids and rebid.
I was sitting right here thinking, I don't know if that's a good idea or bad idea, but I mean, if you really do feel...
Well, I would just like, I'd just like to interject, if, if you don't mind. We're required to bid these projects, so we have to be really careful that we don't subvert the bidding process. I mean, bids can be low, or they could be high, but we can't just have a soft bid that people are able to adjust at a later date, so we have to be careful about that.
I think if, if what I'm understanding, you're talking about the allowances that James is talking about?
Allowances are allowed to some extent, but we can't make a whole project an allowance. It has to be bid out, so we have to have firm numbers so we know who we're choosing, we know we're getting a low bidder. Somebody bids a hundred dollars, and then the whole thing's an allowance, and they come back and later, and they say, well, now it's three hundred dollars, that's not really a bid. So, so we have to be careful. I mean, that, that is something certainly we can explore, but we need to be careful we, we don't subvert the required bidding process.
And to your question about rejecting and rebidding, the roof market right now is still very unstable, being told that it could be upwards of six-plus months still to get polyisoe insulation, and I would venture a guess that if we were to reject these and rebid it today, that it would probably go up another ten to fifteen percent over what we have currently.
Well, and, and just to Gordon's point, I, I think that you only do this on a, on a, in these kind of bids, you're, I mean, probably half the price, half's probably labor, probably half's the price of the membrane, I mean, when you're getting into these kind of projects. And when you have a single item that you know of, I mean, obviously, if you're doing a two hundred thousand dollar thing, you know, building, that's going to have, you know, twenty different trades and, and different types of materials, there's no way you could do that. I, I mean, I understand it, but, but, or, or you would only, if it was something weird like the, you know, the, the hot water heaters, or something like an HV, I mean, you, a big-ticket item, you could pick and say, because of the market, we'll do this, and then you give a tolerance about what you could, what you would allow, I think. I, I'm assuming if you've used it before, can you give me an example of when you've used that strategy before?
So, a, a prime example of that is a lot of times in like roadway projects or paving projects.
All right.
You know, they're, the asphalt companies, they will not give you a guaranteed price. They're going to adjust it up or down based on what the asphalt index is, and so, they're always setting that as almost like an allowance when they bid that.
I got it. Good night, that's, all this, I didn't know that, all this was going on out there.
It, it is crazy times. I, the, the market is just, it's incredible the way things are going right now.
So, I don't want to pave anything, I don't want to put a roof on anything right now, because I don't know what it's going to cost. But you can go get some two-by-fours. I'll take you with me.
You know, we're, we're all hopeful, looking at the futures, that, you know, the economy is going to stabilize for the construction market in the next six-plus months or so, but, you know, we really don't know for sure. We have some that are saying, yeah, it's going to go good, and we've got others just saying, it's only going to get worse, so hang on tight.
Business as usual. Any further comments on this?
Thank you, James.
Thank you.
Item nineteen is a resolution authorizing execution of an agreement between Forsyth County and Information, Inc. to provide hosting and maintenance services for the I-reception application. Cindy Furkins here, and I do believe that you received an email with some additional information about that.
The email was very helpful. It, it gave all the stuff she went over, that I didn't hear some of it, because I can't hear it, but, but basically, it, it was, it really, it was very helpful, made perfectly good sense. I got it.
All right, thank you, and thank you, DSS folks. That's great. Property matters, you got several of them. Item twenty is a resolution authorizing execution of a lease agreement between Forsyth County and the Wells Center Incorporated for Women in Transition for lease of county-owned property located at seven twenty-five North Highland Avenue. Chelsea Swaim reviewed that. If you have any questions?
Questions or comments?
Chelsea's back there, good. Well, twenty-one's also Chelsea's. It's a resolution authorizing the execution of assignment of hangar lease at Smith Reynolds Airport from Truist Bank to Mount Arrow Properties, and I mentioned in the memo this morning, Gordon, that we, the insurance issues have been resolved, so I think we're good.
Okay.
All right. Item twenty-two is also Chelsea's. It's a resolution authorizing the reservation of a negative easement for Forsyth County across a portion of property at nineteen forty-one Union Cross Road. She's here if you have any questions.
Questions or comments?
All right. Item twenty-three is a resolution ratifying and authorizing execution of an interlocal agreement between Forsyth County and the town of Walker Town for use of premises. We talked a little bit about options we're looking into, and next Thursday, Kirby will be at the meeting. He will be able to do a condition assessment. I'll try to get that out to you in advance of that meeting, and then, we've been working with Darryl Walker with the schools, who is here around the potential for that old Walker Town Middle School gym facility, so hopefully, we, we will be at a point where we can make a decision on that. And then, really, the items twenty-four through twenty-seven are all tax administration matters. Last week, Michael Pollak kind of introduced it and mentioned that John would come in and do his annual settlement, and so, he is here to settle up and get you to order to collect and all kinds of stuff.
Here's Johnny.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Pleasure to be here. The tax collector's settlement is an annual required report. The official settlement report is over three hundred pages long, and thankfully for you, it's been provided to you electronically. This presentation provides a summary of information in support of the official report, and also details our efforts around enforced collection activities. Technically, we have to, you have to accept my report before I can be charged with the collection of taxes for the coming year and subsequent prior-year taxes as well. There are some external factors that are at play that obviously, we don't have any control over, but I like to report on those. If you were to look at the unemployment rate by month over the last year for Forsyth County, we were right around six percent unemployment rate, and we also had some bankruptcy impact as well as some appeal impact. Bankruptcy impact remains stable and is about at a level of one-half of what it was about three years ago, so that's good news there. The appeal impact was greatly reduced, which is not uncommon, as we were in the last year of our reappraisal for that time period. You can imagine that part of the workload is actually collecting payments itself. The top three methods consist of about ninety-four thousand payments that our staff processed in a, in ways that are more by hand or in a more direct fashion. That represents a small decrease over the prior year. The bottom three methods consist of about eighty-one thousand payments that were processed by staff again, but these were processed more in a, in an electronic fashion through files and things like that. One of the largest ones is, of course, the mortgage files that pay through escrows. One thing we do want to mention is that we do offer the ability for people to pay online. There are fees associated with that, but if you remember, it wasn't that long ago that you approved us to have a new payment vendor, and so, that presented the public with reduced fees for, for, for those payments, so wanted to just mention that at this point. It certainly is an online option, but the folks do have to pay their fees to use that, but now, the fees are reduced, and the most typical fee that we see is a two dollars and ninety-five cent flat fee for any kind of debit card.
Oh, that's good.
And e-check is at twenty-five cents, and credit card is two-point-three-zero percent, I believe, for all the major credit cards.
So, that, so that number, the thirty-four million collected this year, how would roughly compare to last year? In the online payment, if I'm reading it right, twenty-three thousand nine hundred seven cents payments through the website?
Yes, sir. It was up, it was up some, yes, sir. I don't have the figure written down about the amount of money, but I know that the amount of online payments have been increasing over the past several years. It's not dramatic. It's about a three thousand account increase over last year for all three of those methods combined.
Okay, thanks.
Certainly, we have to do a lot of work in value in property to even get it to the point of even making a bill, whether or not anybody pays it on time or not, but I wanted to provide, provide some information to you about vehicles. The number of vehicles increased about twenty thousand last year, so we have about three hundred and thirty-six thousand vehicles in Forsyth County. Our Board of Vehicleization Review Appeals was reduced. Since 2021 was a reappraisal year, we've sent out notices on all the properties, so that's a, that's obviously a very large number for all the properties in the county. The number of deeds processed has increased anywhere from twenty to twenty-five percent over the last several years. We were at about eleven thousand or twelve thousand deeds a couple of years ago. The number of telephone calls that we receive on our seven oh three, twenty-three hundred public line has greatly increased. That's not unusual in the year of a reappraisal. Normally, we see about forty-five thousand phone calls come in on that line per year, and this, this year was fifty-eight thousand or so. As far as calculating the calculation, the collection rate, there certainly is a formula to that. We go by what is prescribed by the Institute of Government at Chapel Hill. I would point out that if you're comparing our collection rate to other counties, not all may follow exactly the same processes. So, the status is actually, tells us our scope, and it, it helps us understand the delinquent collection work that we have at hand at the beginning of the year in January. So, in, in Forsyth County money alone, we were to collect two, two hundred and fifty-seven million dollars, and once we processed everything by the January sixth deadline, there was twenty-three million dollars in unpaid taxes at that point. And through the, the work of, of the public and our staff working together, we were able to collect by June thirtieth, twenty-one million of those twenty-three million dollars. Another way to look at it is about ninety-one percent of the payments came in on time on their own, and then, of that nine percent that was unpaid, our staff and the public were able to get paid ninety-two and a half percent of that remaining. Just to give you an idea, the total levy that we have to collect for the county and all jurisdictions is about four hundred and twenty-six million dollars a year. So, the big question always is, well, how did we do on our collection rate, the official one? And, well, we were happy to report some very good news to you. The collection rate, oops, I went too far, got all excited there. The collection rate this year is at ninety-nine point thirty-two percent, and that's the, that's the highest ever in Forsyth. It represents our, our sixth consecutive year of collecting at least ninety-nine percent or more, and so, we're very proud of that. Certainly, you know, we always want to thank you for supporting us, supporting us through staff and other resources to help us be able to carry out our mission and do our job, and we also thank the public, because in, in property tax, there's nothing that we do by ourselves. Everything is a joint effort between us and the public, and so, we recognize at the beginning of every morning, that's their money, and it's our goal to have it be in our coffers as appropriate later on. But I also want to recognize our staff. We, we do have a wonderful staff downstairs, and as I normally do, we have a few members of our staff with us here today. We've taken care of one row there, and they're obviously just representative of, of the fine folks we have and the hard work that they do, but wanted to say thank you to, to you and the public and, and to our staff. It's certainly a privilege.
Thank you.
You know what, John? I've been here since, what, nineteen ninety-four, and I have never heard of the tax collector assessor receiving applause, and you've gotten two of them.
Maybe I should just sit down. Stop while we're ahead. Thank you. And as if the official rate was not good enough, I always like to do something that I call the adjusted collection rate, which of course is not official, but it does involve things that we have no control over, because when someone is in foreclosure or in bankruptcy or under active appeal, I, I really cannot do anything to collect that money, and so, if you were to take that out of the equation, our collection rate would be at ninety-nine point four or five percent. So, just wanted to, I always like to mention that, because I feel like that's the, that's the, that's telling you what we did on what we could do, so. This gives you a short history of, of our past collection rates, and this year, each one-hundredth of a percent is approximately twenty-five thousand, seven hundred dollars in county revenue. It takes a lot to move the needle sometimes. As you're well aware, the public may not be aware... As you're well aware, the public may not be aware, but we are fortunate to be the collectors for all the municipalities that are located in Forsyth County. And so this shows their collection rates. Six out of the 10 municipalities saw increases in their rates this year, which is a fairly typical amount.
High Point got 100%?
Well, there's only a handful of properties.
Oh, okay.
But they're all paid up.
All six of them paid up.
That's right. As far as prior year collections, I need to do a little explanation here because if you look at that bottom number on the right, it looks like we had an outstanding year collecting prior year taxes. And while this number is factually correct, I need to explain a little bit. The circumstance is that when a property is under appeal, I cannot do enforced collections. And so for the last several years, we have had a very large valued property that is under appeal. And how they choose to pay their taxes is pretty much up to them. They still would have to pay interest for being late and things like that. But they, they can rightfully pay all, pay part, or pay none. And so what, what this really is the result of is they paid half their bill on time, and then after it was past due, they paid the, or after June 30th, they paid the other half. And so if you took that one payment out, really, our results would be right in line with our historic averages, which is around 31%. So as much as I love that number of 40% there, it does deserve a little bit of an explanation in fairness to everyone. As far as the municipalities and their prior year collections, this, this is a very changeable number every year. Some of these nominal numbers are very small, very small numbers in Bethany. High Point, for example, High Point's at zero again, 100% collection. But so these numbers do move around a lot, but I wanted to give you an idea of what that looked like. In this, in this case, seven out of 10 increased over the previous year. So we do have tools at our disposal, of course, for how we do enforce collections. Do keep in mind that these numbers are not, there's a lot of crossover in these numbers. We could have the same account that we have sent to debt set off, also did wage garn on, and may have even foreclosed on. So that, that one account could show up three times in here. So I want to be clear about that. But this does give you an idea of a couple of things. One, if you go from top to bottom, it gives you an outline of our typical approach of how we collect delinquent property taxes. And so you can see that we start off with the easiest things, and we end on the things that are the most severe, such as foreclosure and levy and sale.
Is it supposed to be, I'm trying to figure out how to ask this question, but I see that where it says accounts, two accounts and garnishments. Does that mean the pandemic is not as bad as we thought it was, that everybody can pay except two people?
Oh, okay. Yes, sir. Rent garnishments. But what, what that, that is not related to what Victor was talking about earlier. What that is really about more than anything, typically, we see that in the commercial arena around maybe a, a commercial property, a strip center or something like that, the landlord has not paid the taxes. We can go to the tenant and intercept their rent payment for payment of property taxes. That could happen on a house, absolutely could happen. But it typically is more in the, in the commercial arena. The numbers are not large there because we usually rarely end up perfecting them because when we start them, usually the landlord comes and pays. So they're not, there's not usually a high volume there that actually are paid out through that methodology. But I do, I like to have it on here because it's, it's a good thing to talk about for people to understand that we can knock on the door of a tenant to intercept their rent payment to pay property tax. Nice stuff we do every, every day there. So, but it gives, it gives you an idea of sort of the order that we try to approach things in. And so I wanted to mention that to you. As far as changes from last year, debt set off was pretty, pretty similar to last year. Term agreements did go down in the volume that we wrote this year, along with wage garnishments went down, bank attachments went up some. Those, those move around a little bit year over year. The foreclosures, the active accounts we have at our foreclosure attorney's office remains pretty stable around 1,200 at this time, which is, which is where we've been for several years now. As far as the uncollected prior year charges, so all the wonderful news we had about how much we did collect, well, there was 1.7 million in county funds we did not collect. And when you add that to the monies for the prior years that we had not collected, that's 3 million, you have a grand total of $4.8 million outstanding. That still, to me, is a lot of money, of course, but it does represent, it either ties or is lower than the preceding nine years that we've had. So we are continuing to try to drive that number down so there's less money owed to the county each and every year. I do have a special surprise for you. This is a brand new slide. We've added one in here. And so I felt like we've, we've been tracking this enough and wanted to share this with you. So what I'm trying to explain here is that for annual bills, they stay in our charge for 10 years. And what that means is, is during that time, we can enact enforced collections outside of that 10 years unless I've already started enforced collections, then I can't pursue at that, at that time. And so when you start looking at what rolls out of my charge in that 11th year, we're trying to show you that, that top line saying that where we started trying to collect $213 million, well, we actually collected everything by the 11th year except for $200,000. And so last year, you see that we reached a collection percentage of 99.91% of the taxes that were originally owed to the county were received and paid as taxes in totality of 99.91%. So the reality of it is, is that North Carolina has very good laws and statutes enabling us to do our job. We have a wonderful staff that were well supported by you folks to be able to go do our job. And as a result, we, we, and with the public, of course, and their funds, we had a good collection year in the current year, and we had a, and if we don't get it in the current year, then we're going to get it sometime in the next nine years. That's basically what that says.
So if, if, if something is off limits to you due to bankruptcy and it gets after 11 years through that bankruptcy, does that just, is that part of the stuff you can never collect? So if somebody has something tied up in bankruptcy and you get to the, so...
If, if we've started an action before that 11th year rolls on, we can hold on to that and pursue under that action. But if we've not started that action, then we cannot start a new one at that time. More good news. When accounting for all the ways that property tax provides income to the county, and this does include VTS or, I'm sorry, registered motor vehicle income, which, which I am not charged to collect, but it is a property tax that is collected on that by the state. When you look at all types of ad valorem tax that was budgeted, it was $281 million last year, and what we were able to collect was $287 million. So that represents about $6 million was collected over budget from the, from the property tax As far as our goals for next year, a lot of these kind of sound like the same maybe, but, but we will continue to work with people in need as we always have, trying to do our best to do that. And we, we have experienced some, some staff turnover, and as a result, that certainly calls on us to increase our employee cross-training, just to help make sure that we're doing a good job on all fronts. Probably our biggest thing that we have, that we want to try to accomplish or get started in some way or manner this year is an NREM foreclosure program. I know that you have heard me talk about that in the past, and that is simply to come alongside our existing mortgage-style foreclosure process and, and still, still foreclosed, but in a more efficient way that's better for the, the community and better for us as well. Less exposure for the county. Last bit of good news I have is in case you're wondering or waiting anxiously at home, we do plan to mail out the new property tax bills to start this process all over on July 30th. That's, that's all that I have, sir.
Any questions or comments for the tax collector assessors?
Just one question, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I had a distressed constituent call me that lives in the Castle Heights community, and she said she inherited her mother's property to discover that there was an $18,000 tax bill outstanding, and it was in foreclosure. And she wanted me to wave a magic wand and resolve that. I told her to contact you and see what kind of arrangements you could make with her, but once the house goes into foreclosure, could you just walk through a one, two, three step? What they have to do to retain possession or to pay the bill, whatever the process might be?
Right. So it's kind of an interesting topic. In the, in the mortgage-style foreclosure arena, which is the only one that we have currently, that process does take typically two to three years from, from start to finish. There's a lot of title work involved, and the, and the way the law is written, there are certain requirements for how people are served that may be, have, that may own an ownership interest or have an interest in the property. They have to be served, actually. And so you can imagine with some heir property especially, you can very quickly get into, you know, 20, 30, 70, 80, 100 heirs that have to be served. And you can imagine they can be anywhere in the United States or anywhere else. So that's why that process takes longer. Once, well, you have to realize that once someone is in foreclosure with us, that means we were unsuccessful to work with them in any other way. So we, that's our last resort, you know, to even get there. But once they're with the foreclosure attorney, there is not an ability for, for them to enter into term agreements to pay that because the only thing that they can do is to get out of foreclosure is you must pay everything that is owed in that, in that suit, along with the attorney fees. And so there's not a, there's not an option for payment arrangements at that time. So I'm telling you all this story because the particular situation that you sent my way, it just so happens that there are some properties in the county that the mortgage-style foreclosure process is very inefficient and ineffective for. It's very effective and, and makes sense for like 90% of the ones that we've sent. But for, for a handful, they're not. And so it just so happens that that is one of the accounts that I have gotten back from the foreclosure attorney. So I do, that, that particular property is no longer in foreclosure. Now, it is in unpaid status. The bill is still around $18,000. So the, I'm, that's part of where, where I'm trying to go with the NREM process because the, the difference between mortgage style and NREM is actually is just how it's perfected about the notification to the public. And it allows us to do something in still a very good way, but, but in a less stringent way that, that is very onerous to, to do through service. And we can also move more quickly. So I did speak with the lady that you're speaking of. We were not able to make a new term agreement with her now that she's out of foreclosure because the amount of money that she could pay and the amount of debt that was owed does not, does not mathematically work out. I did, I did tell her that we would, we would have to, we would pursue anything that we could to still collect that money. And until, you know, either she pays or we have an NREM program, it'll, that particular property will be as it is. Sorry for the long-winded explanation, but that one was a little bit unique.
Appreciate that. Additional questions for Sean?
Okay.
Great, great report. Appreciate all the work and particularly the folks that are here. Our hats rock to you for that.
Yes, sir.
Lots of details, and this has been, this is a much tougher year with, with the assessments.
The bow tie looks good.
Thank you.
Very good. Thanks, John. So in terms of items that you're going to be approving on next Thursday, you've got the resolution approving the annual settlement, which you just heard, the order to collect, which opens it up to, so you can go ahead and, and send out those tax bills. You've got the, and so you've got the order to collect for 2020 and prior year. And then item 21 is the collection of 2020 taxes, presumably with the towns. Item 27 is just resolution approving refunds, and you've got those there. And I don't know if those, those don't look like there's anything too unusual there. So that's it for the tax administration matters reports. You've got five reports there. You can see them listed. I would point to the pay plan report, which is number 32. That is the pay plan that was included as part of the budget. It really gets detailed into positions and so on and so forth. Once that's approved, we do have those adjustments that would go into effect in August. So then the last item is item 33, which is the added item regarding the Highland Avenue property. Chelsea Swain, maybe you could come up and talk a little bit. We've got two options. If you can just step real quickly through, two options for the board here. And this is, this is the first time you've seen this in this format, so.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Kirby, who is on a well-deserved vacation, had previously brought to you two offers to purchase a 1.3 acre portion of property on the corner of Highland and Fifth Street, Highland Avenue and Fifth Street. The GW Holland Housing Corporation offered $100,000 for the property, and United Metropolitan Missionary Baptist Church offered $125,000. So this item has two options. Both options are to authorize the publication of an offer to purchase this property by negotiated offer, advertisement, and upset bid procedure. Option A would authorize to advertise the Holland Homes offer of $100,000 with a use restriction of low-income and veteran housing, which is consistent with the East End Plan. Option B authorizes to advertise the United Metropolitan Missionary Baptist Church offer of $125,000 with the use, use restriction of low-income veteran housing, open air park, or food market, which is also consistent with the East End Plan. Both of these options here include language that would require the bidder to complete their construction prior to December 31st of 2024. And if they don't, the county would have the option to repurchase the property. Both options would require the bidder to submit a deposit before advertisement, and the advertisement would then run for 10 days on whichever option you wanted to advertise. So I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions or comments on this?
Just a comment, Mr. Chairman. I think I asked Kyle the last time he was here what the date was when the offer was made from the United Metropolitan Church, and he sent me an email explaining that that offer came in the very last day of the process, which I appreciate and explained in very detail. Do we have an opportunity to discuss this now, Mr. Chairman, or should we wait until next week to make the decision?
I don't know. What do you think, Dudley?
Turn to the county attorney. I don't believe we're in a position to make it.
Yeah, you wouldn't be making a decision today, but you certainly can discuss any matter you wish to.
Yep, there you go. We'll wait until next week then.
Could I quickly ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, with the highest bid being 125, I mean, I thought that's what we put it on the market, and the highest bid would get the, I mean, I'm not in favor of either the bids, but when you have a highest bid, why is, why are we having this discussion?
Good question. Do you want to ask?
I think in both cases, you're looking at the issue of which bid are you upsetting because you're determining a purpose. And we had a lot that we, we never, we did not designate any kind of purpose. And I think as Gordon explained to us, I mean, we have a lot of discretion. We could, we could actually identify a purpose. So for example, what, what brought the issue to our attention to begin with was the issue of low-cost housing. And if you believe that if the purpose then, if I'm, I'm, I'm willing to sell this if it only if it goes for, for low-income housing, then it would be accepting the Holland Homes offer and then, and actually advertising an upset bid for anyone who wants to put low-income housing on that site. So for example, Metropolitan has a plan to build low-income housing, and if they wanted to build, if they wanted to bid and build it on that site, and then put the park that they were talking about on the other site, they could actually do that because it would be for the purpose of, of low-income housing. I think that's, I think that's the difference. And quite frankly, Holland Homes would have to, they have the option to say, well, is somebody going to bid against me on this, and I may want to submit another bid to make sure I get it because I want to do it? And so it's still an upset bid, it's just you're upsetting the bid And so it's still an upset bid, it's just you're upsetting the bid for a purpose. Is that a reasonable explanation, Mr. Attorney?
Yes, I mean, you, you, you wouldn't want the restrictions to be so tight that only one person in the world could qualify, but as you said, it could, could be limited for low-income housing or, or the other uses. So the differences, option A is limited to low-income and veteran housing, and that's the $100,000 offer. Option B has those uses, but the broader uses of the, of the food area or the park, and that was 125,000 offered by the United Metropolitan. So, but the board has a discretion as to, as to which offer to kick off, to kick off the process or to not do it at all.
So is that how it was advertised from the very beginning, that it would be for low-income housing? When it was put on the market, is that how it was advertised? Is that, are, are we just now making that up?
I think we just said they had to distinguish their use.
Yeah. We did, we did not specify. My recollection is that you did not specify use. We just left it open.
Well, this is, this is just crazy. I mean, y'all needed to make up your mind what you was going to do before we put it on the market and tell people how, I mean, nobody knew when they bid that it had to be for low income. This is not fair. This is, no, no. I don't think this is the way you do real estate.
How there's an explanation, how that is still offers an explanation and still is an upset bid.
This is fuzzy math, fuzzy real estate.
I'll make one comment, and I'll save my other comments for next week. Just one brief 30-second comment. I did some specific further research on this project, and I am 100% convinced that we did not get the full presentation from our second offer. And for those reasons, I'm going to support option A.
That's the $100,000 offer?
Yes.
Any further comments?
Yes, Chairman, thank you for offering me my comments. Gloria, I do agree with you that we have no structure in regards to what we had decided to do, and I think that we do need to honor our word relative to the upset bid process. However, I am not against affordable housing for veterans or for our homeless, our most marginalized folks, our vulnerable people. That is a need in our communities, and I do support our Commissioner Fleming Alameen on that. However, I did speak with, I've had my phone ringing and emails about this particular property, and both of these churches are very fine churches. Dr. Prince at United Metropolitan and Holland Homes, those folks are mighty great, fine folks. And it just kind of disheartens me a little bit because I don't know why the two couldn't collaborate on affordable housing and a park as well. So that's just some note for future notation. What I'd like to see if we are going to move forward, and I want us to be very careful in terms of what we are deciding to do today, if we are asking for the, the upset bid for the maximum at this point, 125, and then there's an upset bid, and it could be an additional upset bid on that, at what point do we say that we have the right of refusal? Am I right, Gordon? We have the right of refusal to just take it off the table altogether? I will make this a little funny at the very end. I have three children and, you know, I tell them that sometimes if they can't come to a rational decision, I just take the offer off the table altogether for all three of them. And I'm sure that we could in the future use this space for a more cohesive use for the health and, health and human services and the public health arena for that campus. But I am willing to listen, and again, we need to make some clarity relative to the upset bid process and what we're going to do. So thank you for allowing me to share.
It'll be an interesting meeting next week because we can do option one, option two, or just not do anything.
Mr. Chairman, before we adjourn, I have a comment on something totally unrelated.
Okay.
It's more, it's a, it's a matter of doing some study, but I, I did speak with one of our citizens, actually twice this week, about gunfire in his neighborhood, about a, about a firing or shooting range. And, and I certainly understand his concern, his family's concerns, and his neighbors' concerns since a bullet is actually, from this range, has actually landed in his house and gone through a screen and hit his house, and sheriff's office has actually taken the bullet out, and it's been looked at and done, because it was, since it went through the screen and hit the house, you get a trajectory to even see where it came from, and it's clearly seemed to be coming from the direction of the firing range. So, and a lot of, a lot of shooting that's going on. So, but there certainly, he has requested a challenge of sort of our current ordinance, which for the county basically is within 300 feet of the house. There are a couple of restrictions, but it's 300 feet from the house, no firing, and it with some other exceptions, and Gordon could, could go over it. But I think there are a couple of things that are, that are in the works. I mean, he was talking about a longer distance and our, if our ordinance was longer than 300 feet, if it were 1,000 feet, for example, or 500 feet, it would be, it would be easier to have, you know, essentially, you can't control how people shoot. I mean, if somebody's going to, if somebody on 300 feet or 500 feet or 1,000 feet, if they're going to be, if it's going to be careless, that can happen regardless of what the ordinance says. However, I think it also makes it easier to prosecute if you have something that provides some limits. It's easier to prosecute people who are violating that ordinance. But I think there's some other, there's a couple legal tools. I think Dudley's been involved in this also and has spoken with District Attorney here, and there may be an avenue to look at that. I think, you know, we could maybe look at, at another foot range, for example, and, and there may be some other ways we can kind of help that. But I, you know, there's a, I, I think I suspect that ordinance has been in place many years at a time when Forsyth County was more rural than it is now, and that, I just think it's something we need to look into, what it, what some options might be that would actually provide some relief to this small neighborhood with about 24 families in it.
Further comments?
Well, I spoke with the gentleman also, and to me, his complaint is certainly something that the law should be handling. I, I don't think an ordinance would handle what's happening to him. And why he didn't want the, the sheriff involved is just a mystery to me. So I think, you know, what Dudley has done and what the DA has offered to do is a perfect solution for his problem, and that let the law handle it and not an ordinance.
Yeah, that's a good point. Mr. County Manager, did we want to do the settlement story from Gordon Watkins?
Yes, please. I think Gordon's got a little bit of information, shouldn't take but a moment.
Thanks, Commissioners. As I sent you an email yesterday, the Attorney General Josh Stein was part of a number of attorneys general across the country who've been negotiating an opioid settlement, the settlement of the multi-district litigation of which Forsyth County is one of thousands of parties. Actually, North Carolina and Tennessee were the two lead counties, two lead states negotiating that, and really Swain Wood, whose mother used to be mayor here, he is the general counsel of the North Carolina Department of Justice, and he was kind of the leader in the negotiations on behalf of the states. And we were also working with him in the North Carolina allocation agreement, which we, which we finished a couple of months ago. But they announced a $26 billion settlement, which was just sent out this morning. It, it's actually two separate settlements. The first one's 21 billion over 18 years, and, and that's against the three drug distributors, Cardinal McKesson and AmerisourceBergen. The second one, which should be coming out any day now, is $5 billion with Johnson &amp; Johnson, who was a small, in the opioid market, a small manufacturer of opioids for a time. Part of the settlement, in that settlement, that 5 billion is over nine years with most of the money, two-thirds being paid over the first three years. There are also some other injunctive relief in there in terms of reporting by the distributors, and Johnson &amp; Johnson has agreed that they will no longer sell opioids, among other things. So the states have 30 days to approve this, and then there's at least 100, there's at least 120 days beyond that for the local, local governments to approve. So basically, local governments have until the end of the year to sign on to this. What we've done is we've done the allocation agreement. So if, if a state does not have an allocation agreement, local governments will get 15% of that state's money, the state will get 15%, and 15% goes into some abatement fund, which would look like the Golden Leaf Foundation or something like that. So that's exactly why we started our allocation negotiations a year and a half ago because we didn't want something like that. We wanted the money coming as much as possible. Local governments, where the work is being done, so as you know, we should get 85%. Local governments in North Carolina should get 85%, and the state will get 15%. So that, that's what we know as of now. This is, this is a double-sided, one of the two agreements. The second agreement should be coming out pretty soon, but.
What's the plus or minus figure on what we will get?
Well, you know, every time, I apologize. I feel like every time I come to you, I give you a different number, but I'll, I'll give you a different number today. I think it may be a little conservative on the North Carolina side of the 26 billion. North Carolina should get at least 750, 750 million, probably 100 million from Purdue. Purdue is, that's the bankruptcy, which is separate, but it's kind of similar. So if, if the state gets 850 million, according to our allocation agreement, Forsyth County should get somewhere around 22 million dollars, give or take.
Over a period of time.
Over a period of time, over, over 18 years. That's right.
Any further comments or questions? Richard, you haven't said a thing. And you're still not going to say anything. Have we come to the end of this fine session?
We, we have.
I would, I will say this. The, the meeting was, I think, well-done. We put out a lot of information for those who were here on behalf of Tanglewood. I would, would hope that if there's anyone left in here that didn't sign that sheet back there in the back, we want you to do that because we are absolutely interested in what goes on, and that's the reason we're, we're doing what we're doing today, and probably won't do anything on Tanglewood next, next Thursday until we get it, get, get the information in. Okay, well, if, if no one's, no, no one has anything else to say, Ted Kaplan is in Alaska, so he won't make the motion. Anybody want to motion to? Oh, thank you, Richard. I can't get it out. Running out of means, thanks for motion.